United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice.
Roll call, we still just have the four?
That's correct, as of right now.
All four present? Any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir.
I move to approve the agenda.
You moved to do what?
To approve the agenda.
One second.
Well, I would, I would like to have a discussion first. We've got light items on the agenda and I would like to amend the agenda to include more of a consent agenda where we can approve all of those minutes in one motion instead of individually. And that, there's nothing wrong with doing that.
Well, I, I don't know that we can do that tonight since it's already been published as such, but we can do that in the future if needed. It's not common that we would need to do that, but we could look at doing that in the future if needed.
I don't, I don't, this, I don't agree with that, John. The agenda's been published, all of the items on the agenda are there, all I'm suggesting is we move all these minutes because some of us hasn't read any of them, most of them up here have only, have read two, but there's no reason why we can't move them all at one time in a motion.
If you want to do that, you can go ahead, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I would like.
But it's alr-, I'm just saying, it's already been published like this, so if you're varying from that, that's up to you.
What we can do is ask if there's any changes to any of them, then combine them all in one.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, see if it changes.
I have something I have to request first.
You don't have to change the agenda for that.
The first three meetings have already been approved. If you look at your meeting minutes of October thirteenth, these minutes of July fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting, and the August meeting and September meeting are all approved.
First three are done.
Then you can, you can just strike those then. I apologize, that's a mix-up on my end.
That's fine, that's fine. If it's more proper to do them one at a time, let's do them, we can go get them through, and in the future, we'll do them that way.
Yes.
I, idea, this is a fluke thing that they got backed up like that, it really, we shouldn't ever have but one, maybe two minutes at a time again, that wouldn't need to be batch approved in a consent-type agenda, but I see the, you know, efficiency in trying to do that. It's, it's up to, it's up to you guys.
You want to bring your microphone down? Thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, I, and I think we all hope that this won't happen again, so let's, anyway, so let's, let's do it.
We had a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Second.
Play changes. All in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
Passed with all present.
Okay.
Chair, I, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth, twenty-one meeting.
Get a motion?
Second. Is there any reason why you wouldn't make a motion to accept them all? There's no need to go through them one at a time.
What if we try to combine them all and see if there's any changes on any of them?
Okay.
Any known changes from items seven to seventeen?
Set our consent, our consent agenda, and I, I read them all and I did not find a problem with any of them, so I would move for approval as published.
Four through seventeen? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for item seven through seventeen. The first three are already done.
Seven through seventeen, the first three are approv-, have been approved.
Oh, okay.
Oversight.
Got a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Passed with all present. Item eighteen, ordinance amendment, section fifty-two point four-five mining and extractive uses. Notice of public hearing, Wade Park Planning Commission hold a public hearing at City Hall, nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, six-thirty, assume thereafter Monday, February fourteenth, Tuesday, February fourteenth. Twenty twenty-three, to hear the following request, request the city of Wade Park to amend multiple sections of the city ordinance, section fifty-two point four-five mining extractive uses. Public hearing opened at six-thirty-five.
Mr. Jansky, planning commission members, folks in the audience tonight, anyone watching at home now or later, just to bring you up to speed, this request is being made by city staff regarding proposed amendments for the city's mining and extractive use ordinance, although more informally, we tend to call it the mining and quarry ordinance. Due to unexpected and, and a kind of sudden influx of applications for these sorts of uses we have within the last several years, staff had proposed a moratorium to prevent additional applications in the fall of twenty twenty-one to allow some time to review the existing ordinances and consider potential modifications or perhaps removal of allowance for new approvals entirely. Over the, the last several applications for mining projects, staff had numerous contacts from surrounding property owners, often with similar sorts of concerns and questions. For those of you planning commissioners that have been in your seats for a while, you may remember some of the concerns that, that kind of popped up time and time again when we had some of these requests in the public hearing component. Ultimately, after reviewing applicable ordinances of other area communities, kind of weighing some options and multiple discussions with city council during work sessions, staff presented a draft ordinance to the planning commission in late September of twenty twenty-two, hearing the associated public hearing, the, the planning commission and staff, you may recall, we've received quite a bit of public feedback from property owners indicating kind of dissatisfaction with that draft, opposition to many of the elements that were proposed, most notably, probably rising to the top of those comments, the, the significant increases in setback requirements, that would included a proposed one thousand-foot buffer to any property under control of Stearns County for Quarry Park or, or scientific and natural areas, and a limitation to ten-year total project term. At that time, since we ran into the opposition and discussion with the planning commission, we indicated that the desire was to withdraw the item from consideration at that time to further refine, so that's, that's what was done. The city council extended the moratorium in late September twenty-two with direction for staff to engage with the public and mining company representatives more directly as part of further considerations. It's not the norm for ordinance revisions to, to kind of go out and solicit a lot of input from, you know, various kind of factions, but we, we opted to, to go forward with that. In the time since, staff has held multiple meetings and, and discussions with both representatives from Johnson Materials, Inc., who does some of the mining projects in the area, the mining quarry projects, particularly the granite variety, Stearns County staff, and we presented feedback received from them as well as comments received from residents and property owners during two city council work sessions. Kind of in the background of all this, I've also been getting, you know, periodic emails or contacts from individual residents or property owners as well. Since that time, from the original draft in September of twenty twenty-two, I'll just kind of run through instead of the whole ordinance for sake of a little bit of brevity, and I know a lot of the folks here tonight were in attendance a couple weeks back when we had more of an informal kind of public discussion and listening sort of session, so I won't go through the whole ordinance, but the major modifications from the original proposed draft reviewed in September twenty twenty-two are, are bullet pointed. First and probably most significant was the deletion of a proposed buffer from Quarry Park, deletion of revisions to existing setback requirements, deletion of proposed change to notification radius, you may recall, we had bumped that up significantly to avoid any issues where people would complain that they didn't get a notice if they were, you know, a little bit outside the typical radius. This one is of particular note, maximum total of six interim use permits for mining and extractive uses operating at any one time. We'd set up use, use permits or permits for mining and quarrying at any one time and criteria for handling and determining first come, first served scenarios that may arise from a limited number of available interim use permits. Don't expect that to be necessarily likely if this goes forward, but there's a, always a potential that you could have kind of a, a contest to get to one remaining permit, so we needed to have some criteria to handle that, set that scenario. Further revisions to initial and renewal term limits and a hard cap at twenty years for new projects, that does not apply to projects that are already approved, they would have the ability to request additional renewal terms without a, a cap. Maximum five hundred acres of active interim use permits for mining and quarrying at any one time, requirement for annual noise study at city's discretion for each project to be paid for by owner-operator, and language requiring noise level limits at site perimeter. This would really be only utilized in the event of unresolved complaints or anything that, that can't really be resolved by, by a staff level, the intent isn't to go and do this just for sake of doing it, it would have to be a, kind of a last resort option to verify compliance. Maximum numbers of, or excuse me, maximum hours of operation, which can be further restricted based on a permit, but cannot exceed, I believe that's set in ordinance, or the proposed ordinance of no activity between six-thirty PM and six-thirty AM. Requiring some additional information on total estimated material reserves for proposed project in anticipated future phases, if any. Change to referencing existing state statutes regarding requirements for environmental review. Nothing in the ordinance supersedes anything at the state level, it just wanted to kind of clarify that, that they are in effect, so we have to comply with them and put it in writing. Setting forth a requirement for pre-submital meeting with any nearby public landowners such as Quarry Park, or in the event we had something along a riverside, perhaps Saint Joseph, because they're looking at a park on the opposite side of the river for future use, anything within five hundred feet, we would, would trigger a requirement for a pre-submital meeting ahead of a formal submittal, so we can kind of, uh, kick the tires on our proposal, so to speak, and get the heads together in the same room to discuss and, and figure out what works. Requirement for proof of insurance, requirement to adhere to and abide by road limits for hauling, that's something we do look for in our applications, it's not explicitly referenced in ordinance though, so we wanted to codify that, and it, that is a comment we received from a member of, of the public as well, a resident in the area that didn't make that comment before, but they did reach out and they're just concerned with Granite View Road being fairly recently redone, that we don't want to negatively impact that. Language specifically noting that failure to meet performance requirement may result in revocation of permit. Groundwater impact study done, done by professional hydrogeologists for projects proposing impacts to groundwater, it's my understanding that most of these projects don't have any proposed impact to groundwater, but it's potential that could be there, so we wanted to, again, codify that. Criteria for setting performance bond amount and minimum standards for, for bond, and some, some language ensuring that fill materials and reclamation activities are done in a matter consistent with the comprehensive plan for the area, fill and grading, if it's something that the intent is to develop it with structures and long-term development, we want to be sure that that fill is engineered in such a way that it can support those sorts of developments. If it's, you know, far enough out that it's basically going to be returned to, to farmland or graded and put back, you know, that's, that's probably a little bit different situation that maybe doesn't need to have quite that, that detail or same level material with it. Again, we did have a public informational meeting and discussion on February second, a couple weeks back, with majority of city council and all members of planning commission in attendance, thank you again for that. The meeting was posted as a public meeting ahead of time, we did have about probably thirty people or so in attendance with the primary request from comments received being consideration of potential for extending the ordinance allowance for terms beyond twenty years and concern with the, the city option to require the annual noise studies at applicant's expense. Discussion with the city council and planning commission members in attendance noted that desire was to move forward, that the draft is written and without further modification. So the draft before you tonight is the same language that was reviewed a couple weeks ago at that meeting, minus a few small typos that were fixed, capitalization or a, a period added, nothing, nothing of any substance. I would add that we have received, or I have received several emails from property owners after the meeting from, with further comment. I was intending to include those, but I, I opted not to just for privacy's sake, but they, they echoed the, the same sentiments of the desire to have allowance to extend beyond twenty years and in certain instances, if, if there's a desire there and there's a, if there's no otherwise reason that, that not to allow them to do that if the development wasn't nearby or anything like that, just basically echoing the same comments that we heard previously. Additionally, per the request of the DNR, the draft ordinance was provided to multiple contacts of the DNR office and they were extended an invitation to the February second informational meeting discussion via email as well, they sent that on February twenty-fourth. At, at the time of writing, when I completed this document on Friday, I hadn't received anything, but later in the day on Friday, I did receive some comments from the DNR and I put that sheet in front of you for your consideration. They did request that that be provided to elected appointed officials as, for their review. I do, I do believe that we've got a, a pretty good thing going here, I, I know not everybody is happy with every single element of everything, but that's probably indicative of some level of compromise. I, I think the proposed amendments would aid significantly in addressing some repeated concerns we've had regarding the extractive uses and assist staff and more thoroughly considering the impacts such proposals would have. I, I can say, it's always possible that if we continue to see a lot of these sorts of proposals, you know, obviously, if this goes forward as, as drafted, we would be capped out at six at any one time, so it, it may kind of put the brakes on that a little bit, but odds are something will come up sooner or later that, you know, maybe isn't accounted for ordinance, but that's with anything that we draft and I'll have to work with that on a, you know, case-by-case basis. I would add, through this process, and just to reiterate, I, I know I mentioned this earlier, but through the, the past months and years, oh, we've, we've made some good contacts with folks of Stearns County, folks of the DNR, so we know who to send these things to directly, instead of just sending it to the generic address that pops up when we pull that, that information from the, the address system as to who gets a notice when something pops up. You know, when you send it to Joe Blow that lives next door, it's, it knows where to get to and it's going to land in his mailbox, but when you send it to the DNR or to Stearns County, you know, those are organizations of hundreds of people, so it doesn't always get to where it's supposed to be right away, and now we have a, basically a email list of people that have requested to receive that and opens up kind of that channel of communication for these project reviews. Basically, that being said, that would conclude my staff report, I would, I would recommend the approval of the, the ordinance amendments as presented, you have the copy in front of you, this is the, the same copy that's been posted for city council consideration. The, it's a little bit tougher to read because the, the new language isn't, instead of just sticking out in red, it's in the italic, italic underline, and removed language is noted in strike-through, so, but I would, I would note that the, the bulk of the additions are new additions rather than removals, but there is some, some instances where things have been clarified or, or removed. That being said, we can, I think you can open up for questions or discussion.
I do have some questions, but I think the public hearing has already been open, so I think we should take that first.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if anybody wants to come up to the podium, speak, name, address, and any concerns you may have, it's now the time to do it.
Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director, eighteen oh-two, County Road one thirty-seven, Wade Park. I just want to thank the city again for all the effort that you put in and the thoughtfulness and the conversations. And the conversations that were had prior to the, the draft of this ordinance and then bringing it back and, and continuing those thoughtful conversations, so thank you very much. I do want to just reiterate that we would like to see these rock outcrops specifically in, in terms of the granite mining operations are unique and not found throughout the entire state of Minnesota, they do hold some significant rare, threatened, endangered species, so just to make sure that we are considering that before approving things moving forward, I know there's some language in here that makes sure that the, that the applicants are, need to follow state statute and things like that, and I think the conversation prior to most of these, because they will surround the park, those items and things can be brought up to make sure that, that stuff's happening as well, so I would just ask that you consider adding that into this at this time, but obviously, I want to thank you again for your time and the effort, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Adam Ripple, Rankin Noonan, attorney for Johnson Materials was here back in September.
Get the mic a little bit.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Appreciate the commission, particularly Mr. Nierenberg, taking the time to take a step back and engage all the stakeholders, county, property owners, operators like Mr. Johnson. Obviously, as a business, they prefer not to have any regulations, it's not a realistic expectation, they've currently got an operation here in town, hopefully they've demonstrated that they're responsible operators. The ordinance, as it's presented, is something that Johnson Materials can live with, thinks it's a, a reasonable set of regulations, really just with that one minor issue related to the term, and I, I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. This hard and fast twenty-year cutoff, I have concerns with this from a number of perspectives. One, we think it's just simply too rigid, it imposes a time without any real reason behind that, and it ignores what's happening around the site, so if a permit's issued for twenty years and over the course of, of that twenty years, development encroaches and that mining operation is no longer compatible, we understand that that makes sense, that there is a point where it might need to end in order to eliminate conflict with neighboring uses, but simply imposing that twenty-year requirement doesn't accomplish that. The, the rigid timeframe also does not take into consideration the significant amount of time that goes into the additional permitting that's required, so with Johnson Materials' current permit, so they, they go and they get the interim use permit, took over a year just to get the, the wetland permits on top of that, an additional project might also require environmental review, which might be a, a second year, and so you've already chewed through a bunch of time where there's no actual operation in place, and so just kind of arbitrarily picking that twenty years really has a significant impact on the economics of, of a project like that. So we'd ask for some flexibility, not to say that a permit should be given for fifty years, but at that twenty-year point, if it makes sense to renew, we, we think that the city shouldn't force itself to say no to that. The other, the other concern with that term is, I think it's actually counterproductive to sound land use planning, in part because through establishing this as an interim use, the city has already made a determination that this may or may not be suitable everywhere, and so if you grant that permit and cause that operation to stop before all of those resources are utilized, now you're creating a secondary use, so that use has to stop, but there's still that demand for aggregate or granite, now you're forcing somebody to come to a second site somewhere else and you're, in that scenario, really doubling the potential for conflict with neighboring uses, and so if you're going to dig a hole in the ground, you should really get the most out of that hole you can before you go and you start a second one somewhere. The last, the last point I wanted to say, I, I heard Mr. Nierenberg talk about the noise study, we don't dispute that that's appropriate regulation, your comments tonight about using that as a tool to resolve outstanding conflicts or as a last resort, I think that's appropriate, just would like to see some language to that effect in the actual ordinance. Right now, that ordinance reads as if the city can impose that annually for any reason, and that's kind of scary as a, as a business owner who's trying to conduct an operation. We previously provided an example of a noise study, I believe it was from twenty sixteen, at the time, that, that costs seventy-five hundred bucks just for a day spent out there monitoring sound, and so if that's imposed every single year over the course of a twenty year permit, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cost that may or may not be appropriate. We agree that if there are, if there are conflicts or complaints, that that, that's an appropriate thing for the city to do, we'd just like to see that embodied in the language that's not there currently. That's all I have, thank you.
Jeff Johnson, Johnson Materials, I'd just like to take the time to thank John and Shauna and the planning commission and everybody who's worked on this ordinance, and I think we've opened up some good lines of communication between the city and with the county, and I think the ordinance as a whole is a, is a pretty good product. Like Adam said, I think none of us know what's going to happen twenty years from now, and if, say, we are mining out there and there are no conflicts at that time, I think that there should be some possibility to extend beyond that rather than go and try and open up another site when we are already in one that doesn't have a conflict with our use, so, I mean, we understand that there could be development twenty years from now, there may not be in the area that we're mining in, so we just asked you that, you know, that you consider that and possibly get, you know, vote to approve the new ordinance with the, adding the possibility if there are no conflicts to extend past twenty years. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
I'm just, I'm, I'm Greg Mick, and I'm part of the property that they're talking about, and it's.
Want to talk into the microphone, Greg?
And it's been in the family for, our family for over a hundred years, and I'm sixty-five years old and there hasn't been a change back there ever, so now we do, we do have a possibility of something happening and I'm just kind of hoping that it, that it does, so I guess that's all I got to say.
Anybody else would like to come forward and speak?
Motion to, I make a motion, hearing no people standing up here, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to close public hearing, all in favor, sing we're saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, public hearing closed at six fifty-nine. John, as far as the 20 years go, they can always do a variance after that if it is every, no complaints and all that. Wouldn't it be, it's like any ordinance?
Well, typically, variances are more for the physical aspects, density, bulk height. That's something that, you know, I guess is more of a legal issue that would have to be discussed at that time. But, there is also the possibility, you know, it's not something that you really want to bring up much, but, you know, 20 years, you, at that time, the ordinance itself could be amended again. You know, it's a future planning commission, it's a future council, and I know that the council knows that as well. It's not something that you want to say flippantly and just say, "We'll just change ordinance," but that's a possibility. Now, I know that that doesn't solve the near term if a property may want some comfort level and, you know, knowing that they are likely to be able to go past 20 years, but it is a possibility, you know. The ordinance revision, if it came that time, you know, it probably, probably a better way to treat it. We don't know what the next 20 years will hold as far as the development, and it might be time to overhaul the whole thing again. I don't know. You know, we don't have that crystal ball, unfortunately. But, otherwise, I would have to kind of defer a little bit to see if a variance is something that would be viable, but it's certainly something that could be researched if it came down to it. But, you know, that's quite a ways off.
I guess I've got some concerns about it. I mean, this is a whole different ballgame than Martin Marietta is, you know. Martin Marietta's been going, started out as Shili Peters, that's been going for 75 years. So, to put a hard and fast number on it, that it's got to be completed in X number of years on a project of this type, I question, I kind of question the wisdom or the need for that, to put a hard and fast rule. I guess in place of that, I would consider making it a, you know, asking them to renew it every five years and then, you know, leave it open-ended on the far end. If we want more control over it, we'd have to say, you know, renew it every five years, for instance, and leave it open-ended on the other end. I don't know. I can see the argument for keeping it open longer than that. I don't know. I got misfeelings on that.
And the rational, the rationale, I should say, for 20 years was that, you know, that was kind of the comfort level of the city council. There are one or more members of the city council, at least the iteration it was, you know, previously, that really had no desire to see any more new mining operations or quarry operations at all. You know, and the idea with 20 years was that was, you know, kind of felt to be a reasonable compromise. Initially, we came across with 10, and that was something that there was initial support for, and I think we all agreed that, okay, well, that's definitely too short in the scheme of things when you look at the scale and scope of these projects.
Maybe this is the bone that's been thrown to the dog, and maybe we have to accept it for now?
It could, it could be.
You know, part of it as sitting in the city council, you know, my position was 20 years is great, but it should be proselytized out in 10 and 5 and 5. But, I was convinced that 20 years was a good figure and just let it ride at a full 20 years. My position really was 10, 5, and 5. But, at this point in time, I think that what we have is a good compromise here. It really serves purpose for everybody. Everybody's happy with it. And I think that we need to commend John for the work he's done on this and go ahead and put a motion out there that says, "We're going to move this to the city council so they have an opportunity to review and work on it as well." But, I think it's a good compromise, and it's really a good regulation at this point.
And I would add that, you know, we wouldn't be necessarily held to 20 years and then it changes. That could happen at any time. We wouldn't have to do a moratorium and put the brakes on things again. But, you know, perhaps it's something where we let some time pass and kind of go back and work together again, maybe, you know, a little more informally and say, "Okay," you know, "It's 20, 2035 now, it's 2037, whatever." Maybe we should take a look at this and see where things are at and if we want to amend the ordinance again and if there's a desire to do that.
Yes.
No, my question is, you know, we get into the aspect of arbitrary and capricious, and I appreciate the 20 years, that it's objective. We all know what that means. We can measure what that 20 years is and when it ends. But, to the point of some of the people that testified, it may be too short. Is there a way to add on that if, because it would be in the, isn't it an arbitrary determination if there's going to be an impact to the development nearby at that point? Maybe that's where a variance comes in? Or a possibility of, hey, you can get another five-year extension?
I would assume that if it came absolutely down to it, that there's probably a way to proceed with a variance legally without amending the ordinance. That probably takes a better legal mind than mine, but I would think that there's probably a way to do that. I don't think you want to do that right out the gate and say, "Okay, you're approved for 10 years, and we assume that you're going to be approved for 30 years," you know, for a brand-new project. I think that might have to be presented, you know, at some point towards the tail end of the 20-year lifespan of the project and say, "Okay, here's the situation, here's what, in this case, here's what hasn't happened," that it doesn't pose an issue, that there is additional reserves perhaps that could stand to be taken out. We're in such and such a position to reclaim the property in this way that could be more beneficial to everybody. There's, I wouldn't close a door on that.
Yeah, I was just trying to come up with an objective way. And as part of the information that the applicant has to provide, if they're providing, "Okay, we think there's this much in the ground and the potential for this much in reserves, and we think that our project timeline is X number of years, that we can take, extract a certain number of tons per year," is there a way that we could kind of know if we were going to bump up against the 20 years right away during the application process? So, again, it's more objective and it's not somebody's arbitrary, "Hey, that hole in the ground is now impacting a neighbor." It's either 18 of the 20.
I think if that's, you know, if that's what you're looking at, probably the better approach is, you know, if you want to consider the language that Mr. Ripple provided, which is basically less than a sentence, if I recall, that gave a little bit of wiggle room past 20 years. Maybe he can enlighten me as to what it was. Please, if you want to come up. It just kind of left a crack open in the door. We reviewed it briefly at the meeting previously. We can pass them around. Thank you. These two, these copies were comments, some language that they submitted as suggestive language for consideration. The first was the consideration upon, for perhaps extending upon, beyond 20 years. The second was some suggestive language around the noise study. We can perhaps send those down.
Sentence could be added at the end saying, "Consideration could be given by the council to extend it beyond," but, you know, or, I don't know, maybe that's opening a door. I don't know. But, you know, 20 years is, I understand the rationale of 20 years, so I, you know. The other, the other idea would be that they'd have to reapply.
As far as, it would make more sense, though, I mean, logistically, I can't imagine a scenario where we would have someone close up shop on a, on a otherwise active quarry just to meet the criteria and say, "Okay, now you got to reapply." And, you know, there's situations where I don't think that would make a lot of sense because you're pulling up stakes and mobilizing equipment out of there. I think if, you know, I don't see that as a, really the workaround I'd want to use to extend something beyond 20 years and say, "Okay, just make everything leave for a year and then come back and apply again and start back up." I mean, it doesn't meet the ordinance, yeah, but does it really change anything? No.
Better wait until the end of the 20 years, they start in the 18th year, 19th year. To get an extension at that time would be the time to start it. Because then they'll know from the 18 years of running what they got, how it's going, what they're running into, and what's left. Now, looking 20 years out, it's hard to guess what's going to be there. They could have it all wrapped up in 15 years. Nobody knows.
Yeah, it's possible.
If they can, if they can leave it where, after 18 years or before the 20 years, if they can evaluate it and get approval or extension. I can't see it given an extension now, but, you know, it should be able to somehow put something where it's not a dead cap, but it has to be evaluated.
The best bet is to leave it as is and then figure the way around it at that time. And I don't, like John said, I don't think the city's going to close a viable enterprise down if it's conforming to all the standards that are presented. So, I think there'll be a way to extend it if necessary. So, I guess I'm okay with it then.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah. The requirement for the, as I read through this, the requirement for the annual noise study. If there have been no violations and so on and so forth, and the city elects to have a noise study, then I think the city should opt to pay for it. I don't think there's any reason to have, put in there provision for an annual noise study if there's no problem. I, in my own mind, that's ludicrous, but-
How about adding if it's warranted? I mean, if there's a lot of complaints, then it's warranted.
Yeah, right. Then it's warranted, granted, granted.
Those complaints would be in the public record, and so, it'd be clear that a noise study would be a reasonable-
Be coming.
Yeah.
Request to try to resolve the issue.
Just add in there, if warranted, the city can require it.
And maybe that's what is meant by the at city's discretion. But, I mean, to just throw it out there that you're going to have to do an annual noise study just seems kind of not necessary if there aren't complaints, to me. What's your thoughts?
Getting in there instead of discretion, put warranted, if it's warranted.
That sound reasonable, John? Or don't you, or you think that doesn't give the city enough leverage?
Is that objective enough that would work for a language?
I think so. I mean, I can see kind of all sides of it. And I know that, just the discussions with the council, there's reluctance to give up anything that may be required. There's no desire or intent to do that. It's just a ton of work for everybody, and we don't want to foot anybody with a bill. Frankly, we don't want to do the work of contracting and leading it. And I, in the areas that they're looking at, I honestly don't foresee any, there hasn't been any issues to date in those areas. But, I think it's something that, you know, it's, they kind of reflect back to Martin Marietta with that, that Martin Marietta has a condition of their conditional use permit, that they're on the hook for any, any monitoring that ends up being required. I know that there's, you know, we're not going to go willy-nilly and say that, oh, there's one guy that keeps complaining and it's, and, you know, we're just going to keep badgering you with noise studies until you collapse. That's, there's no desire to do that. And it does, it does take a little bit of subjectivity that, you know, there's always someone that's upset by something, and the trick is to be able to quantify it. But, if there's a desire to, you know, change that or modify it a little bit, I'll certainly pass that along to the city council.
What if we just took the word annual out of there? Noise study at the city's discretion?
That could be. That may, that may limit you to just one noise study, though. Again, I don't expect it would be a likely or realistic scenario, but if you get one shot and then it's done, even if it comes back and says, "Yep, it's good," that doesn't mean that, you know, things can't change over time. I do see the, you know, where everybody's coming from here, right? I don't entirely disagree with it, but, you know, I'm reflecting other opinions here as well.
Comment, Dave Sue?
Thank you. I know the public hearing's done. Just striking the word annual actually would be scarier for us because arguably, you could impose one monthly then, and that, that's even worse for us.
Okay. Well, the reality here is that any decisions we make are going to be supported by the city council. And as a city council, they go through this very thoroughly and talk about it, and they're the ones that are going to make the decision.
Yep, that's correct. They will, they'll take, you know, the comments received here tonight, they'll take in this instance, because this is a little bit different scenario, they'll reflect on the comments that were received at the previous. It wasn't a public hearing per se, but it was a, you know, a public setting, and so, they heard the same comments that were presented tonight. And then, you know, I'll draft up an updated report that reflects discussion here tonight for their consideration as well. And it's up to them to decide, you know, do with it what they will, either way.
We make a note, have them look at the 20-year thing and see if they word it differently.
Yeah, we sure can. In this case, it's a little bit, it's helpful that we've got some draft language that is easy to plug in if there's a desire to do that without going back and tearing everything out and overhauling it fully. It's very easy to amend that if they, if they were to choose to do that in, for one or both of those elements between the 20-year or the noise study aspects. It's always, that's always the hardest part with any sort of ordinance amendments is when people start making adjustments on the fly at the very end, because then the writing's got to match, and you have a number of people pitching language, and it's hard to get it correct.
But, we're not going to present anything perfect, at least, you know. We've had a good discussion. John will get it forwarded to the city council. They're going to make the final decision.
Yeah.
I think we need, I think we need to pass what we have and give it to the city council so they can work on it and make the final, make the final decision. And that's not respecting anything, disrespecting anything that's been said tonight.
No, and then there's no ordinance, I don't think, that's already been drafted that's perfect. You know, in time, we'll, we'll find something that, oh, wow, that's a glaring omission, or, wow, I wish we would have included A, B, or C, but, you know, that can be changed later or we'll work around it. I think this is, you know, this is a lot of, a lot of time for a lot of people went into this, and I appreciate every, every minute that they spent and every person that came to, how many of these sorts of meetings are sat down at some point. So, that's, again, it's not, not all, not all rainbows and sunshine for every single person, but I think it's probably a reasonable compromise.
It's good compromise.
The last question I had was, on a personal note, I had my ear rattled quite a few times about this particular one. Requirement to adhere to and abide by road limits for hauling. I have an individual that's very concerned about the ground of your road. Is this sufficient language, or is, do we have to put stronger language in that ground of your drive doesn't get destroyed? Is this adequate?
I think this is adequate. I know that that's something that always comes forth. This is actually something that was at the direction of our, of our city engineer to include that tidbit. You know, we can't stop traffic from going on the road really if it, if it meets the tonnage. What we do is, you know, we work on haul routes to minimize that impact with applicants. Sometimes they may even change them. Sometimes they, they may even change them as, as time wears on, if they, if, you know, the site changes a little bit. I, I haven't run into any situation as of yet where the engineers have been concerned with any of the activity on the, on granite view. I can't say that time won't come, but that will be, that will have to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. I don't think we can really build it in any better in the ordinance than just that notation.
Okay.
And that's, that's part of why we require also the, the circulate, the traffic circulation plan for in and out. We try to minimize movements to the degree we can, that they're not spending too much time on the road. We, we don't want to, if, if there's a way to get into their site and quicker and not be on the road, we want them to do that if at all possible, and then traverse through their own site rather than be on the road. Sometimes that's not going to work, but to the degree we can, we try to do that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just had one question on this information from the DNR. When they talk about complying with the state statute for the species, I mean, an applicant already has to comply with all applicable state law. Is this more something where the city would just remind the applicant, hey, you need to go to this website and do this, rather than incorporate it into the ordinance itself?
Yeah, that would be either, we really don't want to get too in the weeds of, of bringing, try to overlap state requirements with our own. That was an error I made with the initial draft, trying to go a little out of bounds with that. I thought it was good at the time, but in hindsight, it really wasn't. You know, we, we'll ask as part of the, has this been completed, or it'll be, you know, we'll note it, and if it's, it can be wrapped in as part of the, the recommendation. You know, all the, all the things, I know, there's a gentleman wasn't, wasn't here tonight, but he brought up back in September, you know, all the things that, that they had to go to, and I think he mentioned it when, you know, it can take another year or two after the city gives its approval to get through all the state elements. You know, those are things that, that, we don't require those, you know, we, those, you, you get through the city first, that's, that we can say, yep, we think it works, you can play okay with the neighbors, it's not going to be a hindrance, you know, to any major degree, go forth. That's when probably the real work begins on your end, and then you got to go through the, you know, the, the gauntlet of the, the state agencies, and that's where we put in the conditions like the, you know, the, the MPCA and the de-watering, and then DNR, and all those things. This, this becomes more of a component of that. If, if we can get the information on the front end, we certainly will. But we would rather kind of let the DNR stay in, in their lane. I don't want to, I don't want to use their criteria as a reason to say yes or no to anything. We'll, we'll note it, but it's, you know, I think that, that's better left to people that more specialize in, in some of those aspects. And if they want to come and comment, they certainly have that ability when, when these things may come up.
Commissioners, can we get a motion?
I, I would make a motion for, for the ordinance as written.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. All in favor?
No, we got to have a discussion first.
That's what we're having before the motion.
Can you further discussion?
Yes, got to have a discussion. No. I think that I would suggest that you amend the motion to include modifications for the city council that considers the 20-year term in the annual noise survey. Add that to the motion.
Did you want to have that be the, specifically as, as they submitted those written comments? Or just in general?
I would like to make sure that when we move this over to the city council, that they understand we would like them to take a close look at the 20-year term and at the annual, the need for an annual noise survey. Those two items in particular.
Well, I will-
Does the second accept it?
If, if that's in the minutes for tonight's meeting, isn't, is that good enough for you, or rather than making it part of the official motion?
It's getting added into the motion. Do you agree with the addition to the motion?
Do we, no, do we have to make that as an, as an amendment to the, a, a motion?
Yeah, modification.
It has to be accepted by both the motion maker and the second.
Okay, I'll agree to the amendment of the motion to include consideration of the 20-year term and the need for the annual noise review.
And I'll agree to the changes for my second.
Can we have a motion and a second?
Further discussion.
Any other discussion? Do we have a vote, all in favor, saying, we're saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Passed with all present.
And, and I'll just make a note here, for those, those of you here, this will go to the city council next Tuesday, the 21st, 6:30 PM. Typically, those meetings are on Monday, but Monday's a holiday, so, and I apologize for bringing you all here on Valentine's Day, but thank you for coming.
Need new business?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn? Bob? I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Motion to second adjourn, all in favor, saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:25.
Great.